This is the This is the September 23rd, 2021 Rockdale County Board of Commissioners zoning public hearing being held at the Rockdale County Assembly Hall at 901 Main Street. So I'm calling the meeting to order and the first thing is the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
My second motion, I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the minutes from August 26th.
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
I second it. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will now hear the rules or procedures for public hearings.
Each speaker must sign their name, each speaker must sign their name to the appropriate zoning case sheet and fill out a public comment card to register their intent to speak prior to the start of this meeting. Each item of business shall be handled in the order that it appears on the agenda unless upon motion of the board, the order is changed. A member of the county planning staff will present each item to the board and will provide recommendations made by both the planning staff and the Conyers-Rockdale Planning Commission for each item of business. The zoning applicant or the agent will have 10 minutes in which to make his or her presentation. Any portion of their 10 minutes may be reserved for rebuttal following the opposition to the application. After the applicant's presentation, all registered speakers who wish to speak in favor of the application will then be heard. They will also be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Once the applicant has made his or her presentation and the speakers in favor of the application have been heard, the secretary will then call upon the registered speakers in opposition to the application. The opposition shall likewise be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Once the public hearing portion is closed, no other speakers will be heard. As a reminder, speakers are to address the board and not the applicant or the audience and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers shall be permitted. After all public comments have been heard, the board may elect to hold general discussion. However, no decisions will be rendered at this hearing. Decisions will be made at the next regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. Appeals shall be filed with the Clerk of Rockdale County Superior Court within 30 days after the final decision by the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have no old unfinished business and we will move immediately into new business. So I'll turn it over to Director Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm the Commissions. And again, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Rachel Williams. Okay, Gladys Johnson, Director of Planning. I'm here to present the items for tonight's September 23rd hearing. First item we have is item 8, Zero Salem Road, Conyers, Georgia. There are two items, a future land use amendment as well as a rezoning. Future land use map case is amended from mixed-use slash employment center to medium mixed residential. The rezoning case is to rezone the property from neighborhood commercial, mixed-use, civic institutional to mixed residential uses. Owner is CBD Investments, applicant is Buckingham Investments, care of battle law. And again, two public hearings and two votes will be required for this and two motions for this. Purpose is to develop a single-family attached townhome development as well as a single-family detached neighborhood. Here we have a, an arrow of the project area. The red X indicates where we are, downtown Conyers, and the green indicates where this particular project is along Salem and Fairview Road. Another arrow shows the properties in question, again, along Salem to the left, Salem Road, State Route 162, you see Veterans Industrial. And you see, this is really close to Newton County, Newton County line, so looking at two parcels right now, three parcels rather. Future land use, again, this is future mixed-use employment center is the future land use category. Here we have the current zoning. Current zoning, combination of neighborhood commercial, mixed-use, and civic institutional As you guys both know, we've been through a couple iterations with this particular case here. There's an initial concept plan which was submitted a few months ago and it shows, the blue squares show where they had some changes. For instance, if you look at the far left, the two squares, they actually changed the access point or the entryway to the development. If you look from, to the, to the right, they actually moved it from the first, the westernmost square to the, to the easternmost one, so eventually it'll be a straight route throughout the pro, throughout the project area. If you look to the southeast, where the other two blue squares are initially on the left, it's not connecting to Veterans Parkway over in the city, over in Newton County. So basically, they had two access routes to change from the old concept to the new concept. Again, this is after some back and forth and coordinating with the state as well as our county staff. So again, 46.6 acres, 255 single families. Out of 255 single family, 79 will be single-family detached and 176 will be attached townhomes. Looking at 5.5 unit per acre in terms of density. 60 overflow parking spaces for this proposal and all have a two-car garages. After the information that was presented and much coordination with applicant staff, recommendation is to approve this with conditions, which we'll go over shortly, and to permit the mixed residential use zoning district and the mixed-use employment center future land use category at a later date as the RM category is already permitted. And so this was something I mentioned, if you recall before, that at the time, the MRU, the M-U-R-T, MRU was not official as of yet, so. Planning Commission, though, they felt different due to traffic concerns, sanitary sewer concerns, and that they thought the project is conflicted with the future land use map. They voted to deny it. Now, I mentioned some of the conditions. Staff, we voted to approve it with these conditions. Again, the 46-acre site shall be developed in compliance with the proposed revisions in the MRU zoning district. There was a rezoning plan by Falcon Design Consultants, March of 2021, and it was revised August 30th, and that's Exhibit D, and that shall be the guiding layout and design. But the actual location of some of the areas, the streets, sidewalks, some of the infrastructure areas will be based on the actual LDP. Again, the site should be restricted not to exceed 255 dwelling units, no more than 176 townhomes and permitted accessory uses, and the proposed 79 single-family detached residences shall be constructed before half of the townhomes are constructed. Again, another condition, at least 60 minimal, 60 guest parking spaces shall be provided throughout the townhome, and again, two car garages for all dwellings. The other conditions are, again, these are similar conditions that we have for most of our townhome development in terms of the facade, the material, cementous material, stone, brick, et cetera. We're talking about the amenity areas, tot lot, swimming pool, cabanas. Also, the covenant conditions and restrictions shall include a clause to limit the amount that can be rented to no more than 5%. And also, the final plat for the residential community, she'll have a clause indicating that because of the fact this was at one time a non-residential area, that you're in an area that will have noises and other issues and items that are associated with non-residential use, so just, okay. Additionally, the applicant provided a traffic impact study in May for the 46-acre site, and that is Exhibit G. And again, any recommendations for improvements by the study will be required on the LDP permit that will be forthcoming if this goes forward. The existing entrance on Salem Road and the pavement that's currently identified as Veterans Industrial shall be utilized by the development and improved pursuant to any specs by our DOT or the state of Georgia's DOT. The existing connection between Veterans Industrial Drive and Rockdale and Gross Lake Parkway shall be kept and utilized, and that was one of those things that those blue circles were showing earlier from the old to the new plan. Any portion of the property shall be improved pursuant to any specs required by our DOT. The installation and placement of utilities and sidewalks shall be coordinated with both Georgia DOT and Rockdale's DOT. And finally, a sewer study shall be required. Any recommendations for improvements by the sewer study shall be shown on the forthcoming LDP. Now, this concludes staff's portion of the presentation. If you have any questions for staff, the applicant is here because they have some information they'd like to present.
Well, my comment is, the planning commission continues to deny any kind of reach, change in our zoning from any kind of a commercial to a residential. Do we have a plan for moving forward? I know we have our future land use map, but we are being asked to change that, and we have done that several times already, but I'm, at this point, I'm wanting to see where that's going and how, how, where are we going to be putting all of these and where are the commercial sites and industrial sites going to be?
In this particular area?
No, in general.
Countywide. As you know, next year, we'll start the process for the 2023 comprehensive plan update. We'll start it next, in 2022. We'll go out and we will help to start designating character areas, as you mentioned, themes for certain areas, industrial zones, environmental zones, so residential, single-family residential zones, you know, rural residential, watershed zones and so forth. That will take place as we start that next year. But to your point, yes, PC has denied this one a couple of times, but as I mentioned, there were some pretty specific reasons because of some things that he wanted, again, the sewer study. The first time it dealt with traffic and accidents, and so the applicant went back and coordinated with GDOT. And the last meeting we had, they didn't have, I guess, the sufficient information, so it kind of delayed it, that's why we pushed it back to this particular month. But the applicant has now actually, only thing they have not done tonight is the actual sewer study. That was one of the main issues that was during the discussion from the planning commission meeting was that they had some questions regarding sewer study, and so. But one thing to note is that even though the future land use plan right now, MXD, will allow them if they wanted to go and let's say to do all multifamily apartments. So one of the, I guess, benefits of what their proposal is, instead of going and doing what, they could do 300, 400 apartments right now just by right as permitted, but by them doing some single-family homes, combination of a mixed density, I think it shows that they are trying to do something, I guess, less intensive. And so in terms of that particular area where the commercial and non-residential use is going, along Salem Road, I mean, there's a lot of potentials for infill and redevelopment that's needed. As you know, that road will be widened, and so one of the things in economic development, I know we are strongly, you know, proponents of that, is that development follows rooftops. And so if they're able to get not only this particular development but others in the area, individuals will come in, purchasing their homes, having a disposable income to support certain types of non-residential development, which the county, you know, definitely wants and also. That's one of the reasons I think that the PC pushed it back, the issue of not having the sewer study.
Okay, so it's wanting to designate property from mixed-use slash employment center. What does that mean, the employment center? Mixed use is commercial and retail and
And employment centers, yes.
And residential and all that.
So the employment center could be an office park, it could be anywhere where employment uses are concentrated in a particular area. It's a non-residential, I guess, designation.
Okay.
You asked my question about the employment center, and I was, had a question about whether or not they would be able to put apartments, but my, my, my question about the sewer study, this is the first time I've ever heard that we've asked anybody to do a sewer study. Is that something that we've asked for in the past? Did they know that, that we were going to ask for a sewer study and that would be a possible way that they could be denied?
At the last planning commission meeting, it was my first time hearing that request, and I don't know if the applicant was aware that that would, that could contribute to a denial, but the, one of the board members asked that question, they had some concerns. I think they were a former water sewer board, water sewer authority member, and so they just had some concerns about water and sewer and had the applicant coordinated with our RWR Sewer Department just to get some, I guess, assurances as to capacity and things of that sort, so.
But is that person a new appointed?
No.
I'm trying, trying to figure out how all of a sudden we're asking now this person to complete a sewer study and we have not done it on any of these other developments?
Not at a rezoning stage, um, yeah, I can't answer that, I don't know why.
Okay, well, I don't necessarily think that I would want that to be a condition because I don't think that's fair to the applicant if we decide to approve it.
But something like that will, you know, if this were to go forward, we get to the LDP and the plating, that, that will be a part of it, but it's just kind of early on in terms of the rezoning phase, but that is a part of land development process.
Right.
It's just asking a little earlier on right now, so.
I guess, okay.
But I do understand your point, ma'am.
But the board can say that that doesn't need to be a condition.
Of course.
Right.
Yes, ma'am. You guys can establish whatever conditions with zoning, yes, ma'am.
I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that this applicant hasn't done this many times before and that, you know, that this, this sewer study isn't something that is typically done. And those are all the questions I have to answer.
Okay. If you have any more questions for staff, would you like to hear from the applicant?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, it was good evening, now, Michelle Battle with Battle Law.
It was late.
Right. Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562 Habersham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, 30084. This is the first time I've been before you all, so I'm glad to be here.
Well, I'm happy to be a Zoom.
There you go. So one of the things that we wanted to point out with regards to this project is that the Bean family has been in the development business quite some time. They were very excited about this particular location. We think this is a much better use for this property than what would currently be allowed on the site. Staff has already indicated the type of development that we could potentially see on the site. When we look at, let's see if I can get this to work right here. Oh, there you go. So in regards to the site plan, I think some of the things to note here is that we are right near the intersection of Salem and Fairview, and when you go down a little bit further, you, you know that you're, you cross the line into Newton County, and you're there at the reserves at Lakewood, the park of Arlington Apartments, the, a couple other, Century Community has hint and chase. There's a number of subdivisions that are down there that, quite a bit of density that Newton has approved on their side of the line, not so much on the Rockdale side of the line. A lot of the traffic, it seems to me, that is being contributed to this area is coming actually from another county into Rockdale County, which is necessitating all these changes and improvements near the intersection. We took the initiative and moved forward as staff had requested us to do, to do the traffic impact study. We've also met with GDOT to get some sense and understanding of how their design was going to impact what we were doing. As a result, we actually moved down the entrance point to a spot where GDOT was more comfortable with our entryway. Additionally, we found out, and this kind of hits on the water and sewer issue, that they actually, there is a lift station that's located off of Salem Road. GDOT is actually moving that on their don. We asked them to move it a little bit further into our site and have actually volunteered to help pay for that, at least some portion of that cost and expense, but it is a county-owned and operated lift station. And so we believe that with regards to the sewer issues that have been raised on the property particularly by, on the planning commission, that in fact, we know, we're experienced developers, we know that we have to address the lift station and the sewer issues. There will be a basin study, and whatever that basin study requires us to do, that's what we're going to do because we know and understand what that process is. So from our perspective, there's no need for any additional condition because when we go through the land development process, they will tell us with that water, the sewer basin study exactly what we have to accomplish in order for the project to be able to move forward. We tried to balance this site out as a mixed residential community with both single-family detached and the townhome community. There is the point of entrance off of Veterans, I guess that's Veterans International Parkway, going through the site to get up to the Fairview side of the project. These units that we are proposing, the price points will be, I believe, in the 300s for the, a single-family detached and in the high 200s for the townhome component of the project. We started out, the site plan that you saw a second ago, this is actually the revised site plan that shows the entrance point slightly moved over. Because of some of the improvements that GDOT is going to be making, we actually anticipate that we may lose a couple of lots in order to comply with both the county's regulations and what GDOT's requirements are going to be, but the site plan that you see here is very representative of exactly what it is that we are proposing. In terms of elevations, again, we're adding the single-family detached product with a list price starting at between 300 and 325, two-car garage, craftsman-style type units. In terms of the single-family attached, it's also a craftsman style, it'll have two-car garages with two parking spaces in front of each unit, and again, those units will be between 240 to 250. We will be doing streetscape improvements within the interior of the community along all of the right-of-way, and these kind of just show you a typical lot layout. And in terms of the facade materials, again, we will be doing a craftsman-style type unit with cementitious siding, board and batten, brick and stone accents throughout. Minimum square footage will be roughly 1,800 square feet on the units as proposed by staff or as indicated to staff. So we are, again, very excited about this project. We know that the community has had concerns about the amount of traffic in the area. There was also some consider, concerns raised by the planning commission about that initially. We went back, did our homework. We know that GDOT has already started its process. The project for the improvements along Salem have already been approved. They are simply in the stage of getting all of the easements and other things that they're going to need in order to actually do the project. By the end of next year, they should be ready to move into the construction phase, hiring whoever the contractor is and moving into actually making those right-of-way improvements. Our project, we know, will take roughly three to five years of build-out. It'll take us about a year and a half, about a year or so, between the end of this year, I guess it is, a year and a half, to the end of next year, to be able to get through the land development process and put in all of the infrastructure, and then we would start the build-out in 2023. So we will be working kind of in tandem with GDOT. We want to coordinate with them about the right-of-way improvements. There's going to be new sidewalks, a multi-trail that's going to be along that area on Salem Road. And again, we think that this is a great opportunity for us to do a project that really, I think, would blend much better than to have another commercial center on this property or potentially apartments that would create even more traffic and not really contribute to raising the level of interest as well as support for the commercial developments that are already along that corridor. There are a lot of communities that are suffering and retail businesses that are suffering because of COVID and the changes in the market and how we even buy our food. People are using Ubers and e-commerce and all kinds of other stuff, and so we want to be able to support those businesses along that corridor, and we feel like bringing these new residents with more cash into the area will be a help. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, and I guess that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Just one, the, the points that you've discussed regarding the placement of the roads is that was, are those changes a result of the traffic impact study?
Yes, ma'am. So both the traffic impact study and our conversations with GDOT led to the changes that we made on the latest iteration of the site plan.
Okay, and what, what were the results of the traffic impact study as it pertains to more traffic? Like, how was it going to?
Um, I actually sent the traffic study over to staff this morning, and I wish I could say that I remember off the top of my head right now what the, what the results were. I know that there's no question that traffic improvements have to get made at this intersection and along this corridor. So the, the results were pretty much as expected. The traffic is bad. That's the bottom line. Traffic is bad over there, and it's not going to get better until those improvements are made by GDOT. Our moving our entrance down on the Fairview side was necessitated by where they're going to be putting a median at, so we had to move our entrance down. We didn't want to be also too close to the intersection of Salem and Fairview. And so there was what they call an ICE study, an intersection control evaluation study that was done that said that, yes, they need to improve the signalization and stuff at the intersection of Salem and Fair, Fairview. Well, that's going to happen because that's part of GDOT's plan, so we don't actually have to make those improvements. GDOT is making the improvements that are going to be necessary to allow traffic to flow better in that area.
Right.
And I think staff now has the traffic study.
And I guess, I don't know if you can answer this, but if it were, if, if they built something that was commercial employment center, that could still
Oh, that traffic would be much higher than what we have.
Right.
Yes. There's no question about that, particularly if any type of multifamily would be built. But commercial development typically has a higher number of cars that come through than a residential subdivision.
Those are all my questions. Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So are we ready to open the public hearing or?
Yes, ma'am. Unless there are any more questions for staff or the applicant, yes, ma'am, you can now.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing and hear, do we have any cards of anybody who signed up to speak?
Okay, yes, ma'am. We have one applicant that has signed up to speak, Ms. Charlotte Geller. She is present to, she's in opposition of the project, so.
Okay. And then we have one more?
We have Ms. Brenda and Mr. and Mrs. Bill, David Bill as well. So we have two applicants that are in opposition.
So there's nobody in, in favor of, to speak in favor of?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Ms. Geller?
So we have 10 minutes for the opposition?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe it's 10 plus 10.
It's 20.
She's correct.
It's 20.
There's two applications for this one, is it your land use plan or is it?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Ma'am.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. And, belated birthdays or happy birthdays, may I take this on?
Yes, please.
Since the traffic study was just available today, an original question I had was, their Fairview entrance, would it be left in and, I'm sorry, right in and right out only? So that would be a question.
She's shaking her head, yes.
Because trying to make a left turn out the Fairview entrance to go to Salem Road, you couldn't get across the median now that GDOT is going to put the median there. There's been a lot of rooftops approved in the county recently, besides the 1,191 townhomes that were, that the staff prepared for the planning commission. In addition to that is the 178 in this development, the 145, these are just townhomes, 145 on Flat Shoals near Flat Shoals Elementary School, and the ones, Honey Creek, 75 townhomes, Old Salem Road, 105. Old Salem Road, a hundred and five up near Salem Gate. Gee's Mill Road, two hundred and fifty-one on the other side of I-20. Old Covington Highway, a hundred and fifty-three. I believe those are the ones behind BJ's. Klondike Reserve, sixty-eight townhomes on Johnson Road. Ellis Point, um, Phase, I think they're in Phase Three now. I'm not sure. So, that's a bunch of rooftops that are coming and those are just the townhomes, not the single-family residences. Uh, Chester Clegg, who's Transportation Director of Newton County, that does not have any plans to do any improvements to Fairview Road. It's a two-lane road with no curbs and gutters, no turn lane, no sidewalks. The only thing he, it's not in their long-range plan. The only thing would be he's, uh, applied for a grant for sidewalks. And that would be in the Newton County side. Rockdale County is trying to encourage a walkable community. Um, and in MXD, my understanding is it needs to be two different types of whatevers. It can be residences and businesses or it can be two different kinds of residences. So, in, um, Neighborhood Commercial, Neighborhood Commercial, the purpose of a, of Neighborhood Commercial is to provide low-impact commercial services and retail go- goods and developments that are walkable have a similar appearance to residential building and are within a convenient distance of residents in adjacent neighborhoods and to provide for the needs of a diverse population. Uh, Neighborhood Commercial also sets high standards for landscaping, green space, community design and public amenities, as does the CID and the MXD zoning. Now, those zonings are unique to the Salem Road corridor. Um, they're not in any other part of Rockdale County. Now, they were unique to develop just the Salem Road corridor. Civic Institutional District provides the community with places for offices and service centers for public and nonprofit agencies, education, medical services and recreation. MXD improves the efficiency of land use and transportation systems and quality of life by providing flexibility to developed interrelated uses, interrelated uses in compact, walkable developments. Like, one of the things that MXD said was, was recreational in the civic institutional, um, zoning. And the Rockdale County Master Plan, I don't believe those have any recreation plans for the east side of Rockdale County. The nearest one that I can think of is Johnson Park, which is over new, closer to West Avenue. Wheeler Park, which is Parker Road. Earl O'Neill is on the other side of I-20. Um, the county, the sewer study, I asked, um, the chairman what the county was doing to be proactive about infrastructure. And I got responses from several departments. Um, RWR Director said they were doing modeling for the water service and the sewer service. However, I noticed an item on, on the Board of Commissioners' agenda for voting session next Tuesday, that's a requisition for RWR for a sanitary sewer model for the Snapping Shoals Sewer Basin. What I pointed out to the Planning Commission earlier this month, on the east side of Salem Road is all septic tanks and lift stations. The west side of Salem Road has sewer. All right, the Snapping Shoals Sewer Basin is coming online next month, I think. But, they're decommissioning two other package plans. Avondale North, which is a three hundred and sixty-four single-family detached off Flat Shoals, will be using the Snapping Shoals Sewer Basin, um, with a lift station. Avondale Springs on the east side of Salem Road has a lift station. This development will have a lift station. Um, I noticed there's a first reading for CRS, uh, rezoning over near Peaks Chapel Elementary School. This development is near Peaks Chapel Elementary School. Um, the crossing from the development to try to go to Peaks Chapel Elementary School, crossing that intersection would not be a safe walkway to the school. Uh, cars turning right, cars turning left, cars making U-turns. It just would not be safe. I asked if, uh, Tiers, if there were any other mixed residential use areas in the county yet. He said this would be, he said this would be the first, although this one hasn't been approved yet. The second one is the nineteen fifty-nine Old Covington Highway next to BJ's. That ground has already been, been graded. They've already started on that. They, they got their LDP, which was strange. They, I'm sorry, this is down a rabbit hole. Um, ne- next to BJ's. So, if this is approved for MRU, which the BOC has not approved MRU yet, it's still in the MUR, or I have that backwards anyway. Uh, mixed residential.
We knew what you meant.
Yeah, okay. So, what they're asking to be rezoned hasn't even been approved by the Board of Commissioners yet. Um, I asked what the min- the, uh, ex- minimum green space is because looking at the site plan, the single-family detached, it, it all looks very flat. And I didn't see any trees except for around the outside. Now, yes, there's going to be tree replacements between the curb and the sidewalk. But, those will be young trees that won't replace the mature trees that are already there. So, all the mature trees that are already there, helping with the air quality, are going to be moved and you're going to have these little tiny trees put back up somewhere. Um, I asked what the impervious services were. Uh, the existing maximum is fifty percent. Um, the developer hasn't provided the impervious, pervious surface percent or the open space in percentage or number of acres yet. Um, and I'm familiar, kind of familiar with that because Avondale North is where the Highland Golf Course used to be and they had, they improved their percentage of green space. I, I asked whether the hazard, the lake, would be a hazard to the community or an amenity. Um, the, the land use plan is supposed to reflect smart growth, but there's been changes to it, as you acknowledged. So, is it still showing smart growth? And will this rezoning and change to the master, you, master future land use plan reflect smart growth? The, uh, the snakes, the squirrels, the crack cats, the rabbits, the deers, that are all in my subdivision now, Fieldstone Estates, which is right on the other side of Fairview Road, Salem and Fairview. That's where I live. So, any, any development there is going to affect me. People are already cutting through from Newton County through the back of my subdivision. They, if it's developed, they will have the, sounds like the same problem with people cutting through from the apartments in Newton County through their subdivision to get to Newton County and, and I feel for them because I know how that would be. Um, I guess, oh, things that are permitted in, uh, MXD, NC, NCID, apiaries, daycare, group daycare, seven to eight children, specialty food store, bookstore, clothing accessories, cosmetic beauty supplies, florists, food and beverage stores, gift novelty stores, hardware, health and beauty care, jewelry, miscellaneous store retailers, pharmacy and drug and insurance agency, a real estate office, uh, custom computer programming services, lots of services, engineering services, graphic design services. Some of these people may want a, a small office in a commercial strip to, to, so they don't have to work out of their home if they didn't want to. Landscape architectural services, CPAs, professional office, professional services, tax prep services, other business services centers, including copy shops, travel agencies, don't have much of those anymore. Medical, dental clinic, fitness center, parks, parks and playgrounds, restaurant, ice cream parlors, barber shops, beauty salons, dry cleaners. Um, the, the develop, the townhomes going in on Flat Shoals across or near Flat Shoals Elementary School, they have some property that's really not buildable. And they were going, planning to donate it to the county for paths or something like that. That could be something, if, with the current zoning, that could happen with this property, although it wouldn't give the developer any money. But, it would improve the quality of life for people that have been in the county for a long time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we had another response?
Yeah. Mr. and Mrs. Beal, is there any?
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Beal. My husband is David Beal. We live at twenty-three ninety-four Fairview Road. Um, we're two houses in from the Newton County line. We moved here, uh, to Georgia into October two thousand and one. Uh, and, um, found Conyers, fell in love with it before we got here. And we've been in our house here since. Um, we are opposed to this development. It's number one, directly across the street from us. And Fairview Road is only two lanes. They, although they will be widening Salem Road, there will be, um, there, there won't be widening Fairview Road. And I'm just finding that about the, I've had a lot going on with family and passings. And, um, I'm just finding out that they're putting a median in, median in on Fairview, which I didn't, wasn't aware of. And I was looking at today and going to talk to, um, Frank Charles at the GDOT to find out more about that. Um, and I saw the changes also that they made to the project for across the street. The traffic is heavy, which we, we all know. And if you don't live there, I, I invite you to come by and please, you can sit in my driveway and do your best to get out at different times and see how much more the traffic, how heavy the traffic is. We have the enclaves, which, uh, butts to that land. We call it the enclaves, uh, but there's apartments and a bunch of houses right there. It's in Newton County, but to get out of, uh, the, cars are constantly coming out of there. Cars are coming down the road. Cars are coming from Salem so, uh, and down the road. Uh, it's impossible, although we're right next to Newton, they, to, they have to use the road to, we have to share the road to get out. So, there's a lot of traffic. I pulled traffic counts and in the area for Fairview. It's like six thousand, six hundred or so per day, daily. Um, and so, widening the road on Salem Road, it's like twenty-eight thousand, six hundred a day, daily. Um, I'm also a Realtor and an appraiser, so, uh, and I've done residential and commercial. I, um, the property, the traffic has just been horrendous. When we first moved here, um, for us, back in two thousand and one, there wasn't a turn lane at the end of the street. Thank God they put one in about a year after or so when we moved because the traffic would back up. And if the traffic backs up to our house, you have a big issue because we're, there are eighteen houses on the street on the Rockdale side. So, the traffic has been an issue. I don't believe widening the Salem is going to change the traffic much. It will help some, but if you're continuously putting in rooftops, how is that? That's just adding more and more, um, traffic into the area, um, with, with this project here. This project also does not benefit us in any way as that. We don't have parks on our side of, the side of Rockdale. Um, we don't have anything I need to do. I have to get in the car to drive to. They talk about walkable. Uh, this is going to be walkable. But, there are no sidewalks on the north side of Fairview and there are no plans for us to have sidewalks. I think a few of the houses at the corner of the street are going to have some sidewalks put in or down there, but there will be none for us. So, I would not be able to walk. I've never been able to walk here. And when my daughter was going to Peaks Chapel, we would never send her to school down the road because there are no sidewalks. But, then also, I never know when there's going to be a dog out that might attack. But, I would not do that. So, we're really, um, we don't see any benefit for this. We really wish it could stay, uh, some type of green space, a mixture of commercial, uh, residential. Uh, the commercial side of it could be, we, we have to go into Newton County to, to do our shopping because we're right at that line, uh, unless we try to make it over to one, their Highway one thirty-eight or down into the Ingalls, but traffic is usually heavy. Um, we, um, don't see this benefiting us anyway. We won't be able to use the property, whatever amenities they have there. That will be for the new residents and the traffic will just, again, be heavy. They're going to be coming out onto Fairview Road. That's just going to create more traffic onto Fairview Road, which is not being widened. Um, again, um, we would like this to see, to really see this property being more used as green space, some type of smaller park with, with the other development. Um, and something where we can have entertainment and not have to drive into Newton County to go shopping or on the other side. We're, um, Rockdale County taxpayers. Why do we have to go shop into Newton all the time? Why can't we do some right across the street from us, which would be really great for us? So, at this time, we, we just are not happy. And whatever Charlotte said, we'll go with it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. I appreciate both of, uh, the comments that have been made.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
Do we know the value, like, what, what the, the market rate was for the, that, that amount of acreage? How much it would cost the county to purchase it?
I have no idea, but I'm sure it's a few million, at least.
Thank you. And, and the median, is that going, that's going on Salem Road or Fairview Road?
On Fairview, on Fairview. So, you'll be able to make a left in off of Salem, but you won't be able. Uh, we don't, uh, we don't have to make one off of Fairview.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that closes the public hearing? Somebody help me out.
If there are no other comments, questions, you have, that closes the public hearing.
Okay.
We can move to the next item.
Okay. Let's go to item B under new business.
Item B is request, let me just pull it up. All right. Item B, text amendment case two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-five, uh, section two eighteen, table of permitted uses. This deals with florists, allowing a florist establishment in an M-one zoning district. Staff was approached by a business owner who wants to operate a florist business in a current M-one zoning district. However, the florist zoning classi- use classification is not permitted in M-one currently. The proposal is to allow it in the M-one. And this is the area over, um, Rock Bridge, um, Second Road area. Uh, staff recommendation for this was approval and the Planning Commission also is approval for this particular one. And you'll see the, uh, cut out here, the section two eighteen permitted uses. You see where the P for M-one is where we now allow this to be a permitted by right use. Um, that concludes staff's, oop, yeah, that concludes staff's presentation for this item. Are there any questions?
I think I've got florists.
Beg your pardon?
I said, I think I've, I've got florists.
I think so.
Is there anyone signed up to speak for this?
Uh, there is no one signed up to speak for this particular item.
Okay. We can move to the next item.
Okay. Item C, dwelling units.
Item C, yes, ma'am, dwellers. Um, text amendment case two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-six. Staff was approached by developers who proposed two-unit townhomes. However, our UDO requires that townhomes have to have a minimum of three units per structure. So, what we had to do was go into number one. The first thing was the section one oh-six definitions of what's a town home or a townhouse. As you see, we went from townhouse to townhome. Um, a single-family attached dwelling unit. Uh, we talked about what's, you know, the types of consisting of the two dwellings on adjoining lots or three or more dwelling on adjoining lots. Um, you see that in the next code areas. lots, or three or more dwelling on adjoining lots. You see that in the NAC code areas, we actually included townhomes, three units or more, or two units only. If you look for the two units only, we actually wanted to make it permitted by right in R2 and the MRU and the RM, as well as the MXD zoning categories. Also, we had to look at the supplemental standards aspect of this. Again, if we allow these townhomes to be three units or more, that no building should contain more than six dwelling units unless otherwise approved by the Board of Commissioners. This is something that was discussed early in the year, that you guys wanted to keep our maximum at six units. And for the two units only townhomes, R2, two-family duplex residential district, or the MRU mixed residential uses district, or the RM residential multifamily district, and the MXD mixed-use development district for further standards. So some of the further detailed standards will be found in those other particular areas. We also had to look at the definition. Staff discovered that dwelling, single-family, zero lot was defined and has supplemental standards. However, they were not in the Table of Permitted Uses, which is Table 218. And you see the definition for what is a dwelling. We actually had to add Item 6 under the supplemental standards, where we referred to Section 206-7, what is an MRU district of further standards for the supplemental standards for these two-unit homes. And again, Section 218, permitted use table, again, for the single-family zero lot line, we will now allow those to be permitted by right in the forthcoming MRU mixed residential use district.
Could you tell me what zero lot line means?
Pretty much, it's a property that has, a lot of times setbacks are 10-foot on the side or 20-foot front. It's actually, actually, there's no setbacks on a particular side, obviously. And if you have your driveway, you can't have a zero lot. It's the side opposite of the driveway. So it's a narrow lot.
This is for the townhomes, for-
For townhomes, right, right.
Attached?
Yeah, for the two-family, for the two-family attached townhomes. Zero lots, pretty much it's smaller lot, almost of a cluster development type.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Okay, the third item for this one is for dwellings, is the mixed use and the MRU zoning districts to discuss permitting non-residential on ground floors. However, the mixed-use building is not adequately defined, and a mixed-use building residential unit is not listed in the Table of Permitted Uses in our current UDO. So we went in and had to redo the definition, or actually add definition. What's a mixed-use building? It's a building that provides a mixture of uses, essentially residential over commercial. So residential uses may be for, as an apartment or a condo, but the first floor occupied by a non-residential use office, commercial, restaurant, and the upper occupied with the residential uses, and it could be side by side to another non-residential use. And the second example is a non-residential use that permitted in the zoning district of the property may occupy the buildings. You can have an office in the same building as retail, restaurant, warehouse, and vice versa. Again, this is just adding more diversity of uses, particularly in the residential areas, and we heard the mixed-use argument earlier, and so this just supports that. As you see in the tables, we mentioned that the table didn't, permitted uses didn't include this. We actually added it in the MRU permitted by right and the mixed use development permitted by right as well. So those will be some of the changes for this particular proposal. Fourthly, supplemental standards of use and development and parking space requirement also needed to be revised. And again, we made reference back to Section 206-7 for the mixed residential use district, as well as the Section 206 for the residential multifamily district, in terms of what is, what constitutes the parking and the, yeah, for both single-family zero lot line dwelling unit and townhomes. Basically, there will be two residential parking spaces per unit for both zero lot line and two for townhomes. And based on the actual overall development, there will be one overflow parking space per unit. And this required, yeah, so actually dwelling units, single-family zero lot line, two parking spaces, townhomes, two parking spaces, as well as one overflow parking space. A lot of times, townhome developments, you have guests and so forth, and we try to minimize as much on-street parking as possible. Staff's recommendation for this text amendment was for approval, and the Planning Commission also approved this proposal. This concludes staff's presentation for this particular portion. Are there any questions?
No, I don't think so. Not from me. No question.
And we have no one in the audience to speak on this particular item.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that concludes-
Yes, ma'am. And we have no reports at all, and so, yeah, only, we mentioned earlier that the draft minutes should be, for September 9th, should be submitted.
From the Planning Commission?
From the Planning Commission, right, yes, ma'am, in draft form. But that concludes, we have no reports, no other public comments.
Nothing else from planning?
Beg your pardon?
Nothing else from planning tonight? So we're ready to adjourn.
Okay. So let's adjourn. Okay, thank you.